Where you take off.
I know. David has a handout and he kinda wants to talk to you guys.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for the, uh, when you attempted to follow the rules awarding at the last meeting. I would have to thank you. You know, uh, it really does help your case if you, if you actually presented it with that high percentage. I appreciate you doing that. One of the things that came up the last time is the staffing. So, uh, I didn't make all these calls myself, but I had people making the calls. And I put together a chart showing how the counties that are comparable to this county are staffed, and I'm gonna pass those out to you to have them. It isn't up to me to tell you how you wanna staff the county. But I do think it's important for you to understand what people are doing on this stage. Interesting thing about it is, I think the two counties are probably closest to your situation with the reservation. The most shows in that they actually operate their county offices, uh, the parent state for now. So, uh, you can always keep that in mind when you're thinking about it. But, uh, just take one of these and pass them around. Give you a little explanation, man. Uh, I, I, the chart indicates whether the position is full time, whether it's combined with another office, and whether it's part-time. And, uh, where there's white space, you just don't have to leave it off. So, you can have that one, right? That's fine. So, anyway, thank you. Just, just try and follow the procedure of the day. Generally, the procedure is, uh, there's a time at the beginning of the meeting, uh, for you to have general public comment. And the time limit is going to be more, but I'm gonna suggest with the permission that somebody's going to hold it, we'll at least let one person one time get an extra time. Uh, you don't need to get cut off. But, uh, when, I guess you've got a couple of counties, but you don't need another county has, uh, what do you call it, a?
Contact or permanent.
Yeah. You need to know that the box. I guess not enough. Yeah. I didn't include combined peo-, uh, contract people on there because they're not permanent. They're not employees. And, uh, I wanted you to have an indication of what you have when you don't do that. On your, uh, yeah. Okay? Okay. Well, now let's get moving.
Okay, um, I need a motion for the approval of the agenda, please.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, approved the minutes of these last three meetings. Rest? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Uh, Josh, it's, Josh is from Imag who's, uh, working with our bridges and that sort of stuff. He's gonna kinda give us an update on different things that are coming up and who's gonna work with us on it, so.
Oh, yeah, I actually looked at four more today. See, there's a set of little bridges. We have three more to go over on the west side of the county there. Um, I guess the hot topic one is the one that's about three miles west of here, that county of Alboros, that is close to two years ago. Um, so, I guess we're gonna talk a lot about grants, did you guys just recently get a little bit of that stuff? So, with that, you guys are able to do grants through the state. So, there's two grants. August first, we gather the board. One is the big program, which is through the state, the other is the federal program, which is, it's still through the state, that state law, it's in the state. Um, so as far as the score goes, the federal program pays for eighteen percent, uh, you guys only respond for over eighteen percent. Eighty-two percent of the money will come through that. The other program, um, you guys only respond for the point two. Eighty percent will come from the state. Um, with the state program though, there's two rounds. So, the first round, you have to reply to get, your preliminary is made then, figure out the size, and the few different rounds, we'll talk to you guys about, um, and we'll figure out cost on each one to, or whatever we think we should do. Um, and then we have to reapply following weird actions that the instructor did. Now, the other one will do everything at once. It'll be one smooth process. Um, so I guess kinda what I want to talk to you today is about if you wanna apply for one, if you wanna apply for both. Um, I suggest that's the only bridge you guys should apply for right now. I know there's one other close to bridge, there's a senior unit on the west side of Columbia, but at the west side of the county. So, um, yeah, so the deadline would be August first, that application. So, you guys, you only have meeting during the first?
Yeah, we're gonna have to have, uh, we're, we're, you know, we're, we're gonna have to have an argument this month to get the bridge together, so.
So, just a meeting before August first, you guys just have to make a motion. I'll put the great bill project, I'll send it to you, it'll happen before your meeting, everyone will look at it, and then, um, yes, make a motion and we'll apply August first.
Now, when I was up to period that meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, the federal one, if we apply for that and it says, okay, this bridge will, that's considered a million dollars. And if a year later, if that bridge price increases, the federal one will increase.
Correct.
But the state one will not.
So, the state one, so they gave us a fifteen percent increase over the last two years, but that needed whatever they say. So, yes, the federal will be the dead option.
Right.
Now, I will say this, the odds of you getting a federal one, I'd, I'd say, yeah, like a five, ten percent chance. Now, the other one, to get a preliminary, you know. So, the criteria for it is bridge condition and then user impact, so how many people got over the bridge. That's where you guys really get hit compared to, like, you know, a lot of the more popular ones. So, your score would be pretty low for that. Um, so if you, so for that one, yes, if you will present five, ten percent, I mean, there's a chance. So, you might as well apply for it.
We can apply for both, right?
Yes, correct. So, given the preliminary engineering, though, through the state, you still only have to pay twenty percent back. Preliminary is that one.
Wasn't that done? I, I thought we had a preliminary one done a couple of years ago. And this all starts.
Yeah, so a couple of years ago, when we did a, well, we also called it a local preliminary one, so we did like the cheaper version. So, we'll have a survey done, it'll be a little bit cheaper, but through the state, you know, they require so much more stuff than what we were doing before. So, we still have to go through that process. So, I would suggest, if you guys will apply for both those bridges, um, it would be, it would be sixty to eighty K for those, a fee for those, but you guys will only be on the hook for eight, so. So, you'd be on the hook for whatever that would be in ten, twelve thousand dollars to go. And that way, you know, you know what the structure's gonna be, you know how much it will cost, um, all the permitting is done, all that stuff's done on the front end, and then you can, we can start figuring out, you know, budget, and then go to the extra twenty percent.
Do we need this, this done before we apply for the grant?
No. No, so we can, so, do you guys have a five-year plan?
Yes.
So, we'll have to double check to make sure that both of those bridges are on the five-year plan. If not, you can just put a five-year plan together and amend it on the F E C. It's not, we're not, that's too big. So, we can just amend the five-year plan and say, oh, super annual, annual, um, you will be eligible for that. Yeah, so the, so the big preliminary engineering is, um, I shouldn't say a hundred percent or ninety-nine percent of that. I have, I've never had one, and I personally have seen a couple of them, but I do have one. So, and yes, we can apply for both of those, August first, and then by August, early September, um, we'll know. We got, you know, it's, we'll watch the federal one, if August tonight, then we'll go to the, the big program, which is preliminary. Don't forget that, we'll be looking at, um, we'll get them in September, which is, uh, the rest of our survey in this fall, and we'll be looking at early summer next year of having our options and having, having that conversation of what more do we want. Now, with that being said, we can apply for the federal again next year. That way, that price movement that you were talking about, just because the preliminary engineering done, that just means we're, you know, a year ahead of it. It'll get done a year quicker. And then next August, we can apply for the same. So, if the structures get worse over, um, you know, this period of time, then we'll get a higher score.
Like that one, part of it, come on out, we asked if you get there and what's cap it down there, it's really sexy, flying towards.
There's a lot of trucks that go on that bridge. There's a lot of big trucks going on that bridge. Yeah. And Glenn, Mayor kind of discussed about.
That's actually something we'll do with the preliminary engineering, we'll do a cap it study. We'll put out cap it signs, we'll figure out trucks, we'll figure out, obviously, I would pick the ball up.
I'll say, I should have known it, one of the, one of the two weeks out of there. We just got that disaster because that block's already been out of there.
I, I talked to Joe with Thomas this weekend.
So, there's only two weeks out of there. Is that the one that collapsed?
What, I don't see what bridge you're talking about.
That one by Bumpin' Lee's.
Oh, yeah, that washed out.
Yeah, it's, it's bad on, yeah. It's bad on, I mean, it's, um, and I think you guys know too, right, Tanner, from going over it's, that, that's the other one that.
So, with the big program. So, with the, so the federal program is only to play reconstruction. You know, with that big program, we can do, we're looking at, we're looking at clear reconstruction, rehabilitation, preservation, whatever it needs. Um, so, re, uh, we have to give us up loads, preservation is just the invasion condition for a long period of time, and obviously, clear replacement.
That, and that's one of the biggest issues with jobs.
Your dog can go in down by your place, down the bottom.
Down, it's that bottom that goes back down, yeah. No, and that's fine, so. Um, is this something you guys wanna vote on today, or you wanna wait, or just profess to move on?
So, I can get you guys both, so we're looking at both those bridges. I don't think you guys need to make a motion with that. I can just get you all the paperwork needed, we'll load you, and then just make sure it's on the next meeting, you can special send, and make a motion to do, you know, one or both. And then, um, yeah, promotion, every day.
You, if one time you emailed me about one point five million of five years of coverage.
Probably still about the ballpark, it would be.
It was one point five or one point six. Cause at first, we talked, we talked about the square culverts, and then after, we discussed wheel tacks and everything.
Yeah, so when I started this, a couple of years ago, I started a, like I would say, a simpler version of the same average. And I figured the cheapest option would be to put in these big arts culverts of concrete, headlong with concrete bottoms. Well, that would not be a pretty good state.
Right.
And that option, I was looking, I'm going to do like six hundred thousand dollars, I was trying to get the cheapest we could get because you guys couldn't get any grants. Now you can make grant money, that changes the whole game, so we're gonna have to go by eight thousand.
Yeah. If you would just email that, I will get it to everybody.
Have you bidding, you just like anything like that, or do you actually tell me you have?
I mean, the D O L, like, so I actually hired, yeah.
That one's a different bridge, it's a different bridge, it's five hundred and eighty feet. Yeah, we had six point five million in the grant, we came in at ten. So, when you ask the county for the three point five million more dollars, they just said no. So, we're going back and trying to figure that out right now. Um, if you think it's smaller, it's really. Yeah, so, uh, I just did a hundred quarter immunity county, it took, it was terribly far from here, and that was one point two million. This one would be about twenty feet longer, um, a little more, you know, in the rules, so it's gonna be a little more expensive. So, that's why I said that one point five, one point six, that's a pretty decent amount. Um, I mean, we, we won't be a couple of years in the future, two, five years before we actually get to it, so I could see it maybe, I don't, I don't wanna predict it because what the last three years did to everything.
Right.
Say something totally incorrect, but I can see it going.
What do you think, do you think you think of whatever you're thinking about?
Well, if it gets up to.
You said something here three, about sixteen, or?
So, one point six million was what I originally had for this one, if you guys were to build it this year, bid it this year, and build it next year, and that would, that's, I'm pretty comfortable with that now.
You was talking about the engineering part and stuff, weren't you?
Yeah, he's talking about doing the, the preliminary.
What's that been a process for the bridge?
Twenty, well, the bridge, wherever twenty percent is the one for the state, for the federal, yeah.
Of that, and what, so, first preliminary.
Sixty to eighty thousand.
So, it's ten million.
Yeah, sixty to eighty dollars.
Yeah, yeah, so, like I said, it's talking about, if we can go on now with it, depending on what grants we get, it's gonna buy you about three years before it's gonna be replaced. So, we can budget for that, and.
Well, I put, when we worked on Tanner's budget, we did more in this year for the bridge for, um, to start out, to kind of build so that, that it doesn't hammer a solid wall.
And then, I'll be back, so, I'm, I'm doing my bridge inspections today, and then I'll do it in force, I'll be able to look together, and then I'll be back to present all my findings August, September. So, I'll be back down here, you guys, for a meeting after we apply. I'll probably come out after we see what we get for the grant, and we can figure out where I wanna go from there. So, I'll be, I'll be back to you guys by, by, I don't know if it's, I don't, things aren't good. The one, one out of each year is, is built in two thousand, both for, that's a good bridge. Um, yes, I wish I knew all that, the name of the people that live by it, so I could say that.
Well, I know there's five bridges built in nineteen seventy-five. They're all, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'd say there's seven, three of them are pretty under condition, and the other four, but I'd say, you know, fair, so.
You know, that one in our place, and, so, you know, all the ground.
Well, that's, probably a long way now, more.
Wait, do you find a bigger to build, or, like, who you have? They forgot to do, like, three of them.
We'll push up some more to see, you think?
Yeah, I got.
I got all three of the ones that are over on the list.
Cars and pumpings and.
So, there's one that's kind of on a dead-end road, um, probably a guy's place.
Ninety-nine.
You're in a place that almost is a good place?
Yeah.
Okay, so that, there's that pasty place? That's, that's the one.
Yeah, yeah, cause it goes in the ground.
Okay. I always go legal.
Yeah.
But they're not, they're not too, they're not too hard.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, we'll do it fast.
All right, thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
Okay, Tan County Emergency Manager, you know, you should have, yeah, I, I've got, um, a bring-up list up here if we so decide.
Oh, this is just a copy of that, you have to clean it up. So, is it twenty thousand or something, or salary, or what are we giving to?
So, I hand out a sheet there that's my budget for Han County, and then where your money will go. Um, that's preliminary, and this will be for the two thousand twenty-four, that's it. Kind of gives you a, an idea of where all the money will go. All my budget's, uh, public information, so, any time you have, if you want to see it, or if you want to know, or if I'm out there, you can get that, and that's it. So, timeline, um, I want to come to that. Public estate, they have some paperwork and some changing of, uh, boundaries and districts, and then also the region. Currently, I'm in region three for the bridge management, which is based at the center part of the state, um, Han County across to Stanley, all the way up to, I don't know, fourteen, I don't know. But that's, you're, you're in region five, it's gonna be much easier to reach it, so it's, it's, so they'll have to change that, and that takes months, months and months, and I'll get all that, so, the timeline would be October first, if we send it in, then, um, the other one is definitely one of that, that big. But for that, we, I'm, we, we're gonna have to.
Is there any questions you guys have on this?
I do, I guess, I didn't know it was complicated as it is, and we had to go around this bridge tonight.
It's not super complicated, it's just. Safely going for them to do.
But, we've also been including, this was the main time, we had, we had one thing going through the time, I didn't know that our emergency management was, um, written for it, and this was three, I know Han County, but I didn't have another.
So, district three is based off of T D M and stuff, and, uh, you got, so the other programs, uh, they're written by, you know, so, your response plan, your L E O P, all that stuff, you know, that's, you know.
We just didn't, uh, we didn't consider it, um.
The T D M.
T D M, when the outside, um, took the side, because if it would do one, you'd do the opposite.
So, that's just one plan.
The side side plan, and I, and T D M.
So, there's multiple plans that we, T D M is a, uh, a pre-disaster mitigation, selection mitigation. The L E O P is local emergency operations plan, uh, how everything's made out, the response, there's, there's what. They also have, when you have down, or you have, um, high risk, that people live down there, so there's, there's a lot of the plans. So, those will, those will be, will go over to Han County, over to my office, but.
Can that change a lot?
They'll be updated, if they need to be updated.
That's, that's, I have, I have the top one, that's, yeah, but, and the other one was twenty thousand, you know, and I, you know, you know, we did it, we never went over ten thousand, probably did about seventy thousand, not a separate, and I understand that would be a big one, but, um, but I think, I also have, I don't like having to go to a thing I was never have, contract with you, and then it can just kick out, yeah.
Yeah, probably, you know, if you decide that, maybe it's a new one, it's gonna come down, um, it's better than, I mean, so, uh.
But this is the first time you've talked about this one. Uh, we didn't have, we didn't.
Yeah, I was in a, I didn't know, I did, it was, I learned about it last month, it wasn't, you know.
I just don't know what other options we have to get, unless it's a minute. And I would go up in the high key to that, because when you hear your answer that, you remember that you've done another federal one, and then it's just.
Yeah.
Not very much, you just, they just, they're important, and I've worked with them a couple times, but not on the, but those would be, um, the relationship's all right.
Work with that. So, that's, that's where, yeah, that's where you got the last time, yeah.
And I did read something, and I was able to, you need a copy, but you, that was, yeah.
Yeah. Cause you redid it.
Yeah, so I didn't see it, I'm sorry. Cause this guy, I didn't see this, he didn't really.
Right, and he, he re emailed this one too.
It was not, did we, did I, did we, I'm, I'm, we, 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 yeah.
Yeah. Did you have some? And I, and I felt, as you felt, I felt fine with, with more than a one to two.
I have a, on the hands-on, uh, I like to do anything that's going on, and then put that in office. We'll take that number, give it out here, and then all the other ones, and, uh, accomplish it.
How, how, you took something to take, and another guy tried to fight you.
Did, did you guys have to find something?
I mean, it's something now, we're supposed to make it, we're supposed to get base.
Supposed to get, yeah, there was some.
Something they were mentioning, not so late works, I mean, we were those, our company too, and the other names, but, so, it's federal, so, it takes time.
Yeah, I, I know that, when Dana was here the last time.
There was some agreement.
Some, some agreement or, yeah, something that they had to get, and.
That'll be something, I'll maybe.
Yeah.
I know, we had seven or eight trucks, because when, um, we had, um, more than twelve, because we had, it was part of the, uh, uh, we chose that.
Yeah, they, they didn't even call more than, you know, so.
You got, you had a fourth gear, and you're, you're, yeah.
Yeah, well, I think Tanback and Reliance were very good.
I thought that was the favorite.
Yeah, they're not.
Now, did you guys, sorry, that's, that's, that's.
No, we, we can't, every, usually every county, they change, we, we don't know, and we'd never expect it, if you get, do it, come and have insurance or someone who's long stay, or, our river, we never actually expected, you know, it's a vulnerable situation.
Yeah.
I, I don't count it, I think you have to, you know, one good eye, yeah.
I don't, I don't think it's, we expect, which, are you going to see management, feel this one off, or? They're on their, they're, 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 they're. They're put in a region stuff more, if they're, if they're, if they're, if they're.
But you've got to have, uh, you try in.
Dania, could you close the door there, please, it's a three hard here.
He doesn't think it's, uh, good. Buffalo County pulls out and brings this to you, but, but specifically, he knows that the land is good. And he doesn't think that, sorry, we have to go into your district, and then to date, and stay in the district, and. And I, I'm just afraid of this, and he tells me it's okay, well, then, I'm just like. Well, I thought he wanted to go, she got to come out, turn promising, well, that's more than what he's saying, do it, man. So are you going to keep, keep up some of those other, leaving budgets too? You know, the B border, maybe I, um, get some sort of profit, we don't, we just don't, you know, we can work. So if the failure of violence, it has. All right, I will, listen. Oh, in favor?
I think he's the one, can I have, um, you guys sign that before I go, for, um, conceal it? And then I'll stick it back, and, um, like, it's going to be in the document. Um, the first step, we, 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 and, 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 and.
And then he was six, he was six, and then he was seven, and then he was eight, and then he was nine, and then he was ten. Okay, I mean, my job is. Are you really going to talk to you?
Yeah, I'll have them sign it, see if she's, if they're sure, and then you tell you have their.
Yes, yes. Yeah.
Let me make a difference.
And then what do you do without?
Uh, Buffalo County, all of this. And then, if they're working there, this is started, this is what I told them. And I was coming down, um, between now and then, there was something. Talking to my wife, and then. Okay, like, that radio grants, when did you say they have computer, they all, the whole master grant, um, you, they change every year a little bit, on time, and it's not, this is, you know, the, the, the. They have, um, the flight order, we'll have to, they're already done for this year?
And the one staff that we remember is that, you have some job, you're, and they're, you know, and also something.
Um, and it's, 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 yeah, um. Make a motion to, um, summon this, to, 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 to.
I think it's September, it's September, June. Yeah, I think it's September thirty, that's, that's just fired. It was fired, it was more, you know. They already knew it, it's more, it's, it was, you know.
Well, you have that knowledge, if I have that knowledge, I can do it in the states, and it's all.
I'll send it to them, I'll send it to them. There's full copy, but we just have, then one back, for us. Maybe they need that more. Uh, so Nina made it, like, yeah, it looks like that, a couple weeks ago, I think, that Thursday, we had this guy, May, and one day. And I guess that's what I want to do, you know, you got the baby, so it's fun, I think, too, that, too nasty, and I, I want to say the truth. And we met with her, and she comes from Africa, salary, and, and we need computers, and then looks, they have stuff, you know, to, uh, to, to, to. Just want to, yeah. Maria Kennedy. That really worked out, yeah, because that, we, we thought that somebody said, oh, well, it worked, you, 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 but you always have to, uh. Yeah, but you thought, so it's, it's, yeah, I don't know.
I'll look into that, we have, there are some separate funds for nine-one-one, um, you have that term in the cell phone, is that all?
That's, 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 we, 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 that's what I say, you remember the text, it's always going to happen.
So I, I'm not, you have a different nine-one-four there, that's a whole different mode, you know, even in Hand County, I am the nine-one-four, maybe you're outside, which is, you know, a lot of towns, you bet, you bet. I believe in the fact, even like this guy, he has a, he's found this thing.
So we got, things that, like, three years, and you, we're all, we're.
But I, I know Mariah, um, you know, I can help on that, that's a good one. Fun to print, so it all falls.
Well, you know, you know, some, some of it, you know.
If I have to, that's, you know, that's, I'm, okay.
You can. Ready to get ready to go back.
Anything else for me?
Thank you, very much. Okay, stop, quote, estate retirement, you're yourself.
All right, so I'm Michelle Lemon, and the member services manager for the self-aid retirement system. Um, just so you know, Buffalo County is their last county that is not part of the retirement system, so you are the last holdout on me, so, um. I will be happy to answer any questions that you have, I can tell you about the retirement system, what would you like me to provide details?
Do they all have to do it, and at one point, that was, um, that it's all or nothing?
It is, so once you enter into an agreement with the self-aid retirement system, anyone who, and this is our recommendation, sometimes you do this differently. Our recommendation is anyone who works twenty hours or more, is part of the self-aid retirement system, you are the county are responsible for making. If it were talking a class A position, which is people who are, just your normal, your odds or your treasure, those are class A positions. Um, class B positions would be full-time, which means you don't have full-time fire, and full-time police. Those would be, class B positions would actually contribute at a higher rate of eight percent, we haven't shared, okay? So, your sheriff would be at eight percent, everyone else would be at six. And yes, it is all or nothing, so you all have to come in, um, because that's just the way that the retirement system, so that is a requirement. Now, that being said, some counties, like I said, you, um, you know, some counties say that you have to work thirty hours or more to be considered full-time. What we usually say is if you're offering that position benefits, then they, that's part of, that's one of your criteria, right? This is the benefit of position, part of your benefits, habit is self-aid retirement.
This is what the breakdown would be. Okay, but we did have, say, we, we have, one voted in, boy, that very possibly doesn't want it. Every time we brought it up.
So, I mean, and I don't know who this employee is, but, you know, if they have a reason for not wanting it, um, you know, I could discuss that with them, but. You know, I'm just gonna throw out there that, um, one of the reasons that a pension plan works is for longevity, right? I mean, you're trying to get people to come to work for you, and let's say that they're in a neighboring county, and they have a self-aid retirement system. And they have to come to work, they want, they come to work for you, but you're not offering them the same benefits as they could in the next county. What is the pension offer them, first of all, it's lifetime income, so once you retire from the self-aid retirement system, we pay a monthly benefit based on service. So how long someone works is the gauge of how much they're going to get from the retirement system, okay? So the longer that they work for you, the better off they are, right? So that's one of the advantages of a pension system, is that longevity of service, we try to get them, and we try to keep them. Um, the other side of it is, is that it, this is a portable benefit, so basically what that means is that. Employee puts in that six percent, the employer puts in the same six percent. If I decide I don't want that lifetime benefit, cash the money out, you can do that. You get a hundred percent of the members' contributions, so if I'm a member, I get a hundred percent of what I put in. I get either fifty or eighty-five percent of the employer's, depending on how long they work. Um, do you offer any type of, um, four fifty-seven right now, or any type of, yeah, see, so there's, my, my argument would that, for that person then, would be. Something is better than nothing.
I, I'm not just worried, but I know.
And it's not up to them, to be all true, it is not to the employee, correct? It is up to you as the commission to decide. Sometimes, um, in those situations, if I were bringing in, I just let in a school system, um, the school itself was already in the retirement system. But back in the day, they could decide how old their teachers, and exclude their classified staff, classified staff being lunch, but, okay? When we bring a work in, we say that they have to have a two-thirds majority vote. So if you have all of these employees minus one, you've got more than two thirds. That are, that want to be part of the system. You're not always going to make everybody happy.
No.
So, to me, you're better off offering your employees something, rather than nothing. We know, just looking at it statistically, that you cannot retire on self-aid alone, right? It's not enough money, and so if your employees aren't putting money away into some type of retirement account for themselves. Um, and we know statistically, people don't. Um, the 401K opt-in world, you're looking at about ten to twelve percent of employees who will actually make that voluntary contribution. That's one of the reasons that a pension is, is not voluntary, right? It's a required contribution, and it's because then people make that contribution, it's kind of like providing them, um, with that safety blanket. That, you know, you can't opt out, you can't choose to not be part of it, it gives you that ability to say, this is what we're offering to you. And as a pension plan, we use that to our advantage, because we know that every employee has to put into this plan, which provides us the ability to guarantee those incomes. You know, right, the difference between a pension plan and a 401K is, I'm guaranteeing that income. The self-aid retirement system has been in existence since nineteen seventy-four, we have never defaulted on a benefit, and we have always been receptive of any increase in that, inception. I don't know if you know this, but we are one of the top pensions in the nation, if not the world. We are a hundred percent funded, that means we also do not have an unfunded liability. What does that mean for you as a county? That means that we actually become a plus mark on your, um, reporting. So we are not, uh, you know, some, some pensions have unfunded liabilities, and then that becomes a lineup on your accountability reporting. We are not, we are a hundred percent funded, we are required to be a hundred percent funded by statute, and so we actually become a plus when it comes to, um, comes to that problem.
Now, like, so they're guaranteed a certain amount, or is, is funds, are they?
Yeah.
Can it get more, like, if things go good, or is it?
Nope, it's a set amount, we use a benefit multiplier, which, um, unless they've already been in the plan, okay? The new, the generational model is one point eight percent of their final average salary, which is a five-year average, capped at five percent year over year. So basically, we take five years of the salary, you add it that together, we take that ten to one point eight percent, kind of their total year of service. So if you have ten years of service, you're going to get eighteen percent of your final average salary back.
Who would say, who would say this is best? As in, please, or let's say we have any division that's been used for the years on the court today?
You have to, it's contributing, right, because I even have money to make money, so, yes, it's contributing, yes. And that, that person who's been here thirty years, right, think about what that benefit would have been to them.
That's the person that's already ready, thirty, they want in it.
Right, and what I would say to that person too is, what would you have given thirty years ago to be part of that retirement?
I think they got, they got, at the time, they was, they were.
You know what I'm saying, though, we can look at, look at that benefit, what would have been available to them. Most people, what we try to provide is fifty percent of final average compensation for a thirty-year employee. So if you have thirty years in the system, you are roughly going to get fifty percent of your salary back in the first.
One time, look, so.
No, on a monthly basis, for the rest of your life. So most people in the retirement system, I have about thirty members who are over the age of a hundred right now in our retirement system. Within about six and a half years of taking a benefit from the retirement system, you've taken all your funds out. Your funds and your employer's contribution, that's all gone. The retirement system pays for the rest of your life. So we've got people who have taken, who, I think one of the last ones we just looked at, um, they put in, you know, in their early nineteen seventies, they put in about thirty thousand dollars. They've taken out about two point four million. So that's the advantage, and like I said, that's, i-if you're talking about someone who's got thirty years with the county, that benefit. Would be awesome to have coming back to them on a monthly basis, and, and like I said, you have to look at long-term for the county, I, I would hope that that person could see that. For the next person coming in, what an advantage it would be to be able to provide them with those lifetime benefits.
So six percent from us and six from them?
Yep, and that is.
That has increased.
So in nineteen, the last increase was in nineteen ninety, um, it was five percent, yep. And then it increased to six percent, that is in statutes, the only way that we can actually increase that is if we take it to the self-aid for the legislatures, and the legislature would have to actually increase that. Everything that governs the self-aid for the retirement system is actually passed into law by the legislature. So, um, and we have a board of trustees, um, that, that, you know, we answer to.
So when, when do we have to make a decision?
So you have to start at the beginning of a quarter, so July first would be the first quarter that you could join, um, October one would be the next time. So, you know, obviously, the sooner you join, the better. You know, I could probably, I mean, something. We talked about it about a year and a half ago with a board meeting, and I asked who, and what did. And I got my last school classified in two this year, so I'm pretty, I'm pretty excited about that. Um, just as an example, I had an employee who was working for a city, who was part of the retirement system. They went to work for that one last school, that school as it classified. They assumed, since it was a school system, that they were part of the self-aid retirement system. Um, they actually had a medical condition that happened to them, and, as self-aid retirement system, not only do we offer retirement benefits, but we also offer long-term disability benefits. So this person would have been eligible for a long-term disability benefit, which is equal to either twenty-five percent of their final average compensation, or that un-reduced retirement benefit. But because they were at the school, who was in that, the city, they locked out on that. And they ended up, um, they will never be able to work again, but didn't have that coverage. So that's the other thing, have long-term disability benefits that are automatically covered by the system, we provide that even, with no cost. We also offer family benefits, if you have employees who died while active, um, even for the normal duties of their job, or otherwise. The retirement system pays their minor children, up until the time those minor children turn nineteen, we pay them a benefit. We also offer spousal coverage, so if, um, you can elect to take a spousal benefit, but if you, that, while an active member, your spouse is automatically going to get sixty percent of whatever, uh, excuse me. While active, twenty-five percent of their salary or the un-reduced retirement benefit. So, those are automatic covered, it's out of system, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not the normal. So as a sheriff, you know, they're always out there doing things. So as a sheriff, you know, they're always out there doing things that, um, if something, you know, were to happen, um, you become disabled, it's, you know, for a sheriff, that could be something as simple as twisting your knee, but you can't, you know, long-term disability benefits are covered for that.
Thank you. Yeah, that answered my question.
I had one question, um, just from the previous impression along. Like, the county can't offer, can the county offer a 401K without belonging to the state retirement system, or do they have to belong to the system first?
Is you, okay, so along with the pension plan, we offer a four fifty-seven plan, which is a supplemental. As far as offering a 401K, that, you know, that's up to, that's a private entity type of thing. So I don't know that as a public entity, you can actually offer a 401K. So that would be my answer to that.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, one more.
Yeah.
You were about the honor, the broad conversation, the young, for the little ones.
Yeah, not the advantage, that's where I was going with, you know, you want to steal, you want to steal an employee who's got some experience over here? Well, you have nothing to offer them when it comes to that retirement, right?
So if, if there was an employee that was involved in one county, and then they came to Buffalo County, which wasn't enrolled, but then Buffalo County gets on board, then do they go back into the system the same way they came out, or do they take a break?
Nope. Yeah. So disadvantage for those people right now would be, okay, so if they came over here to your county, there was, we call an inactive member in the system, and so the only thing available to them is a lump sum refund. If they were to pass away, right? All of those benefits that I talked about, those disability and that, if they're active in the system, then those are in place. Yeah.
But if. If we get on board, then they're.
They're right back in, right back in business, definitely. Um, and then you can, they can go from any job that is part of the, you know, people, like I previously worked for a school system, then I came to work for the retirement system, seamless. Doesn't that matter? Because it's all one system, yeah.
I don't know. See, that's very motivating, actually. But, um, I like this, but, and I like this most, yeah. Two, um, things, you're in it, and go with the two-thirds.
We do try to make a decision today.
Mm-hmm.
And then if, if the two-thirds don't match, then it would just be.
But if you had a chance to do this, okay, so we're going to need that, you can do that, okay? I mean, if you had the input that they always want, I'd rather go that way.
Is this up to the commission, or is this up to the employees?
It's up to the commission. Yep, it is up to the commission. They don't have to pose the employees at all. And I will be honest, in most cases, um, you are going to have some holdout people. Um, but I will tell you from experience that I have never had anyone tell me that I, you know, I saved enough money for retirement, I don't know what to do with it all. Right? I don't, I bet you there's not a person in this room who thinks they have enough money for retirement. Things should be.
So what I have there, I did show, I showed everybody who was around. And that, that she would be paid for by the county.
Yeah.
If they have, and we didn't have yet, I think she was going to be okay with it.
Um, the other side of that is, you know, um, that portable, for, for your, that employee who's been here forever, um, she's still going to get her money back. She's still going to get a portion of what you're getting, which she never got before. So that's the big downside point right there, is that even if, um, it is three years vesting, so she's not going to be here another three years, she wouldn't be vested, um, wouldn't be eligible for a benefit, but she's still eligible to get money out, so. The only thing I will say on that is the sooner the better, simply because there's paperwork that needs to be filed with our office to get this moved in by July first. So, that's all it, you know. If we don't have it, and, you know, don't have any, or any incentive.
Yeah, we, we have.
Yep.
That's what I thought.
Everybody and I would part in the story.
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't want to step on people, because it stands this way, so we get to make sense of it. I like the idea of giving you guys a vote.
Yeah. I guess we're having a pretty, one of the.
We'll, we'll talk about.
That's fine, yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. If you guys have other questions, you can.
So why don't you step in here with the bag?
Yep, I will.
We'll come in here and all.
Probably can put Ron Hendricks, I guess you, up first.
Thank you. Glad to be here. I'm not very good at this part of the story. Something you know, you're really, 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 but the thing is, I'm really anxious. Really, I think. I don't want to talk to you, but I'll just give it. I'm asking for, it's a common commission, it's put together. A financial statement. I need to hold, and I just expect. Whatever. Start with the 401K. I have no idea. And I'm not too sure anybody knows. All we ever see is expenses. Expenses, expenses. Where's the money coming from? That's why I say 401K. Financial statement, it includes all financial assets. It could be advanced, it could be anything that says. You know, CDs, whatever. Any of those that are, they need to go the whole way. You've got it, of course, from the front of it is, and it's an invitation. I'm saying that because these brands, a lot of them, don't know. It's terrible, there's too many of them, officials.
Is that a short?
Let me finish you. Uh, uh, state with all sorts of, well, that's what you've been in, the biggest regular budget, I remember. You've got a president, like, you can, you can just sell that.
And it's out there, it's available.
I don't know how to get it out there, and I'm, I'm not the.
It's in a white book, it's in a, it's in a white book, you can't on the.
There's one, then, uh, uh, no, thank you.
Could you please let me speak?
Then it's social, it's social, and using it on a monthly basis. It doesn't have to be an issue, but it's just something that I can do. I don't know whether it's a spirit or maybe it's a problem, or what's the problem? But it needs to be, yeah, all the time, people. I, uh, but I also would say, and I've seen that something like that, the monthly marks, the entrance, that's all. That's called a, a big one, and that's. And what I'm talking about is what you can do with it. That's the only thing that I want to say.
Yeah. I, no. Just stand.
I, I really want to see each one. It's a doctor, a whole lot of things, you see a lot of dollars in the world, and I'm watching that. And I'm worried about the financials, the financials. And a lot of big companies, or small companies, take reservations. They're just getting very aggressive about other things that they're doing there. But that's all they need. How do you guys are doing a very good job? You didn't start it, I went the right direction. Afterward, I want to see, I want to catch up the runway, but don't let the man drown the wave, or he's half, three fourths of the way across the road. Trucks and pickups are fine, but cars are anywhere that they have. Not conditions, you know, you know what I'm talking about. But, uh, no, that's basically all I got, is, in crushes. It's, it's public information, let's, let's get out of the public.
Like you said, there's that, it's pushing out all of what you're looking for. That's not, that's not. God, yeah. Thank you, Rex. I'm sure you're glad people work.
What's this state signing party right now? So there's two hundred and fifty thousand, fifty percent share fund. Is that guaranteed that you?
No, there's about eight thousand on, on, that comes directly and from the state. The vote has to go directly into the highway department, it cannot go anyplace else.
That's not, you, you all, you're up there. Control over the.
Because, and, and I went to the meeting and found that out.
See, grants, a lot of these grants, in the last few years, they've been thrown in place on the paper. And good luck at it, and there's stipulations, never one of them. There's a timeframe, what the government needs for, and other things. Make sure that are not, any grants you got, that are not committed. Really bad. You know, as the way things are going now, not letting a bunch of that back.
I'm generous against you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
I just wanted to agree with him, what he's saying, that we need to know what's going on in our county. We have no idea. In the paper, it says, we've been have time for our, our, for our report, we've been have time for enough financial report. Yeah. I read the, I read the minutes. We need, and we cannot be blacking out figures like they did last time on those checks. There was a whole bunch of them blacked out. You can't do that.
That's the check number.
No.
That is illegal. It is our money. It's not anybody individual's money. That belongs to the county. They were all the salaries and everything that was on the very last items in that, in that, uh, document, that had all the checks written. The checks that were written, and the last figures were blacked out. You couldn't even add it up to see if it was correct.
The dollar amounts.
The dollar amounts, no, I didn't have any idea if it was right, wrong, or indifferent. And I understand, I asked Dave Larson, can they, are, is that legal, and he said, no.
That, no, they are good. What I get myself in. Humor, Phil.
Mary, I, I'm going to look into this, please.
Thank you.
The next story is that, that individual might be paying, well, and then, particularly, be part of the, there's annual salaries for.
Now, I was told that if there's a garnish, she might, though, we're not to know about that, and that's why they have to do.
I, I want to look into that.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you, thank you.
Susan Horrity. I understand what Ron said, they need to get some information out there. Doctor, with a Minnesota complete. The health insurance information payments haven't been published for six months. Treasury report, the auditor hasn't been reported for three months. It's supposed to be done every month. She's got on here April, that's two months back. Like you said, how do we know what's going on? Nothing's published. And this, 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 this contract, this, all the temporary part-time, and that has been here a year, that would not be temporary. Thank you.
I'll just bring it, give me one more time. I'm putting this on the commission yourself, to do this. Ain't nobody else. You're the ones that got to have this, and then to have to do a format, something like what I'm talking about, that's all.
Okay, Sherry?
Well, I think just the fact that there's this many people at a meeting is an indication of the concern of the taxpayers in Buffalo County. Um, in respect, Dave gave us a, a talk about respect, and that needs to go both ways. At the last meeting, the chairman talked to the state's attorney through most of one person's comings. So, could you at least sit there and act like you're listening to our concerns when we give them to you? Thank you.
Carol?
I'm back again, this is the second time I'm on it. You've worked it smiling up here. The second time I have been at the commission, David, however, I, I had been here by the time this was published, before. First of all, we have taxpayers. We're here because we're concerned about our money. We're not here to make you guys mad, we're shaped to align on the same. We all should be working for the same common goal. The common goal here is for the taxpayers of Buffalo County. The only thing we can do together, I appreciate it, I really liked it today, Dawn, when I heard you ask, is if anybody else, everything else they'd like to ask. That's great. Including, we're the taxpayers. We're the ones that voted you guys in, and you guys are in to do what is correct for Buffalo County. Now, when we see that something, that we see, I mean, a blind person can see some of this money that's in, not spent appropriately in this court house. You should be able to tighten the strings up a little bit. I'm not going to elaborate anymore, because I don't know, but I guess what I want to know here, this is the other main thing I want to know. What do we have to do? I'll do it. Tell me what we have to do to get you guys to do this. Now, I don't think I'm being mean to anybody, and I haven't raised my voice, and I haven't done anything online. I'm asking you, please, listen to us taxpayers. You needn't think I came down here this afternoon because I thought it was too hot outside. I come down here because I'm concerned. I don't think, I've never seen him here before. He didn't come because he was bad either. I'm saying you're picking up more and more people because we're concerned. They're not listening. Please, listen to us. Please, another thing I'd like to know, and this would help everybody else. It would help me out, it would help several of these people I'm aware of, and it would help the employees in his office. It would protect them, it would protect everybody. Put a time clock in this place. There's not a reason in the world anybody should be afraid of a time clock. I punched time clock many years, it's not, it doesn't hurt. I had a salary job, I still punch the time clock. It protects the employee, that way he can come and say, or she can come and say, I put in fifty-two hours to stay right here, look at my time clock. And I'm going to say, gee, I didn't want you to be there. And he's going to say, here's my proof. Put a time clock in and protect the employees, and it protects the taxpayers. Thank you very much for listening, and let's get along. That's the bottom line, get along. On the time clock, we've got one employee in here that's not voting in. We cannot make them. Then what about the others? Put it in there.
That the, uh, they, I have a department house one. They do, but we've got one in.
They do, but we've got one in here. So we wanna spend the money to put one class of the time. You waste more money on other things than the time clock.
You should come here, make the five, let the rest go.
Okay, let me back that off just a little bit, Rex. When Michelle was here, Susan said to me, "If she could have more flexibility, she would have loved it." You offered dulce flexibility when you tried to talk her into coming. And, and now we're, we're. But, but what I'm saying is, we're talking two different, it's okay on one stand, but on the other, it's not. Well, let's study.
They weren't hiring. You didn't hire them at that flexibility.
Can I say, can I? The flexibility before any sort of power that they need to flex the longest people. So many people, I mean, the required time of a courthouse being open, and they can carry the flexibility.
Right, but the auditor and the, the tax, uh, person are like officials. That is a fair discretion. If their work is done, they don't, and the sheriff. They don't have to have sick leave. They don't take sick leave. If, if one of them are gone for two months, they get paid whether they're here or not. Whether, yes, very true. And I, and I didn't make those laws. That, that stands the codified law. They're an elected official. So like I said, if, if any of them are gone with a terrible illness, it's covered. We pay it.
Yes, um, I agree with you. You can't, I mean, if they're sick, no, they don't have to be here, but it says codified law. It also says that, miss, reset the courthouse hours for everyone with the exception of the sheriff and the state attorneys. So if you say that they should be here from nine to five, elected or not, they should be here from nine to five.
So, yes, but what I, what I am saying is that if they need to go to a doctor's appointment, or, I mean, we've got a, a family emergency with the treasurer right now.
That's what, what Mr. Safi said, twelve hundred and nights. I don't have to put one hour's in here.
Well, and that's what we did with him.
That part of the hell we decided. But on the other, we decided.
Exactly what I was thinking. I was driving there, it was probably fifteen years ago. At the last time, all the things that were in this courthouse, just keep cost training. Between the three, you know, uh, upending the relatives, whatever. The cost training, he charged it, so there was always two in our courthouse, and one wasn't there. The other one could pick up more support, meaning he's not, that's the cost.
I totally, I totally agree, but we, we've got some disagreements going that we'll not let that happen.
How many remain in that area?
Yeah.
I think the elevator has a key. We don't even have a master key to one of the offices.
I don't know that.
So, but when you lock yourself in, well, when you lock your keys in the vault, and you have to call the locksmith to go open the door.
Charge it to it.
To charge the window that they tried to take off to get into the courthouse, too.
I mean, there's a, there's a lot of things that, and, and I'm gonna be the first one to tell you right now. If things don't change, I'll never run again. I've never been treated with such disrespect. When you wanna talk respect. I've seen my name thrown out on Facebook and everything else. And I am a taxpayer. And everything I do, I think of this county. And Susan, clap your hands, because I know you're on the dock. But unless things change horrendously, I, and I, I wouldn't even ask somebody to sit in this spot as bad as it is. And I have said my piece.
Well, I'm sorry if I offended you, because I have no intensity to offend you.
Well, that's, that is what this county has done. And the things that I've seen and I've heard, that my husband has seen and has heard. When I have people coming from Kimball to work cattle and tell me the things they've seen and heard, there's zero respect in this county. And I am a taxpayer. I've lived here for thirty-seven years of my life, and my husband has lived here every day of his life.
Well, I'm sorry if I offended you, because I have no intensity to offend you.
We're gonna go on, Tanner? Oh, okay. Yeah, I.
No, you, I thought I got it. Well, you did all, most of these houses, I, I was very proud of it. And it was a secret valley. It's awful, and it was to each other. You know? You, you're not all gonna get what you want out of it. And it's gonna be just weird, but I hope you're gonna believe you can do it. And, you know, you know, you got, uh, so thanks, I have to give it a hard try to hear, but I, I would like to see you go.
Feel that ethanol, three twelve, number two died, three oh one.
Can I have a motion to accept? Do you got a motion, Rex? Thank you. Oh, sorry. Okay. Highway Department surplus Peterson auction. Um, we put the Challenger tractor and more on an auction with, uh, um, Chisen Peterson. And if the tractor sold for eighteen thousand one hundred. About eight thousand more really than we hoped for, so. We, we feel like we've got a long, long way out with it on there, so. Uh, Tanner said he got a lot of phone calls on it, and I told him what we knew, which was not a lot, because it hadn't been run for years. We, we felt really good about it. And that ended last night, so.
See, updates. Oh, in the last month, barely finished pulling the retrievings and blading. I've been majoring in business, got smaller infrastructure, there's money available to us. But I've been majoring in that, quite a little paperwork to get that through. Oh, we just hauled some gravel up in Union Township on that little road up there that, I don't know if you could call it, it's hard. Got sprayers on, the, blading, or what, or, uh, blading. Sprayer got completely ready, and we started spraying this week. So that's going today, looks like it's gonna do. And we're tipping over our ace, that's good. And, uh, I guess we've been hauling some of our gravel ain't the best, and so we've been getting some clay from over by the cable pit from them. They gave us clay. I'm mixing it, so we're gonna try and haul some clay in some spots, seeing how it's gonna work, I guess. Hoping for the best, but needs to rain.
It needed a binder.
Yeah, needed binder, so we're mixing it. And then some spots where it's real bad on the road, we'll just dump clay down, and I'll blade it back and forth and then see how it goes, but. Been doing that, and some locates for some culverts that need to go in, and just the rest of the month.
You didn't like glue?
Nope.
Have you ever tried it?
Nope. I was told never to try it, it's dry, but I haven't tried it.
I agree with you. That was the best piece of equipment in Buffalo County ever found. And if y'all aren't there, it's gotta be that one. It's a poor one, it's a nice one. She got hands for that. I knew the total number for it. Perhaps two thirds of the way.
Yeah. I know they have their time in place, from what research I've done, but.
It's no good to pull the shoulder. I tried to keep going, it's been a long argument. The grading is tremendous.
Every, it's supposed to rejuvenate.
Now people, now people, they gotta keep turning the gold. You know, to do your spot really quick. Took the whole world to do the gold, it was a ten grand job.
Well, maybe someday we'll get a teeter, but.
On that, on the, uh, that crossing.
Yep.
I did get ahold of Jeremy Thomas. He says that best case scenario is two to three weeks. Um, this year. Now, here's the deal. He said that he didn't get told he had the job until two months after the real thing. I don't know. He is going to honor the price that he gave us. And he's got to do some work for the court. So his plan is, he's got the rock for it. He's got everything for it. That on his way to work for the court, he will finish that job. Um, and then I called and talked to Ralph Ray. And Ralph said, uh, the other thing, and, and maybe you have talked to him about that, Tanner, was that you would help spread it or something like that. I don't know what all started down there.
When I talked to Jeremy, I asked him what we need to do, and he said nothing.
Okay, okay.
I said, "We don't have to mean nothing from me at all," and he said, "I shouldn't."
Okay, so anyhow, that's, I did get him to answer me, and I talked to him. Was it Friday or Saturday I talked? It was Friday, it was Saturday, I think. I called and I talked, I got him down, and I talked to him. So that's where that's at. I mean, I, I have been in touch with things. Yeah, yeah, so it's either that or we did it, or if we re-did it, it's gonna be come in at higher price, so. He sounds, he's doing something with court. I, I don't know. I haven't had a chance to, to look. So, uh, but I did, I did talk to him. So what is your?
Um, there is, there's some oversized rock at the cable pit. We need some for that bridge that we were talking about down West U. On the wings, everything's gone. And the water just runs down both sides, you know, from each direction, and anyway, that whole thing's gonna.
What bridge is that, Tanner?
It's down by Bunkie McGee's. Bunkie's, there's one new. We're on. Good work.
Oh. The, down there, down in the bottom, uh, and on the wings. West, yeah. Oh, no, 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 no. East. Just west of Dawn's place. No?
No, this is, it's, it's on the Crow Creek. It's on right on Crow Creek down by Bunkie McGee's. It's for.
That's why we wanted you.
There's a bridge.
Okay, the bridge, and that's the relief.
Yeah, anyway, it's, everything's gone away from them wings. We gotta get something put in there before we leave the road.
Is that slab still in place for that?
That's what we're talking about.
One thing, I'll give you one. I've been having a good experience, and if you put a slab in, Christ's sake, get oversized below.
It's, it's all gonna be, it's just gonna be made into a rock cross it. There's not gonna be a slab.
You can put slabs in. It helps you a lot, you know, all within punctures. But that damn string you got the oversized, it's extreme. That ain't more than fifteen five rock. I've got a bunch of them, two tons.
I need a loader to lift it, man. Gonna need a loader to lift them, man.
I, I can load the board of the town.
Anyway, I'd like to, I would like to buy some of that oversized out there, put it along them wings on there. And then we put something over that, but. Yeah, and Spencer, and that's about the amount already. And, and, yeah, we could. I mean, we can do something like that, but. And that might, that might help, too. I just don't wanna lose the road anymore than what we've already have, or the shoulder, I guess, is what, what the problem is. But I wanna dump some oversized down in between what's eight away and that wall. In between the road and the wall.
What size are you calling oversized?
Huh?
How big is your oversized?
Well, I, so, it can't be very big, because it, it won't go down there.
There's a load that's oversized.
I'll need that for another project, so don't let anybody take it. And it's good rock, and that is, uh, it's about seven bucks a ton. And that's actually really cheap, and I don't know. And we won't need more than two loads for this, and we won't even need that, I don't think, but I would like to be able to buy it if it's good.
Mine are free.
If it's too big. But this, I'm gonna use over there.
I guess, it's, it's.
It is? Yeah.
I can't, I can't vote, I can't do that.
You guys don't, a dollar?
Well, it's seven bucks a ton, and I, I mean, I've.
Two hundred and fifty thousand, sorry, sorry, you have to round two thousand?
It's, it's gonna be a couple hundred dollars. But I just, I wanna make sure to do this right.
The only, the only thing that we have to do is to roll the seat back. That's why I'm here, a hundred and fifty thousand?
A bridge bumpage, and probably lots of ten men since time, but part of us might enter it. And that's what wings made, so you gotta keep them on.
Yeah, it needs something in there, because it's all, and you know, you've seen that, right? Where there, there ain't nothing left.
Less than you're looking at.
If we put gravel in there, that'll wash away faster than, and I just want permission to buy some from.
Yeah.
And what else do you want there?
The trailer.
Okay, but I'm looking at a trailer, a deck over trailer, and it's the haul call that's, would be a primary job. Got a bunch of culverts to put in, and from what I understand, the way they did it in the past, is they hire somebody to come put them in. They go and load the equipment, they come back here, load culverts, go back up. Well, there's a ton of culverts we can do ourselves. A lot of that work. And I got about eight off the top of my head, so we could put in tomorrow, and we'll have a good start. But I don't have a real good way to haul, and I found a trailer, it's a deck over, so it has no fenders to tear off. And it's eighty-six hundred and fifty dollars, I believe, it is. That's brand new. It's got seven thousand pound axle, so if we had to haul pickup, something like that, we could. We can get one lighter with fenders, which is probably for us, but it'd be two thousand to twenty-five hundred dollars less. Then you're really gonna make it, yeah.
Well, and I, I was having the outlook, but we had to pay Rod Ryder to put in culverts, and, uh, you know, it looks like he put in, uh, two thousand. Three of them in twenty twenty-two. And that was six thousand alone, that we hired somebody to do it. So we could do it ourselves, and that was close to paying for the trailer.
Probably two of them on the red and two.
Yeah, it doesn't tell me where they were at. Well, I know one was, uh, um, an approach to, when Niplin's on that, that is. One of them was that, so, I mean, it, I, I personally think that we pay first, so if we, we got the man on now to be able to do it, but.
Yep, and good hands down, so you want to.
So, uh.
We're getting somewhere. No, I'd go for it, and you'd be sold that tractor, it wasn't used in that cave in the last thirty minutes.
Yeah.
I mean, in reality, I mean.
Right.
It should last forever.
I mean, there are, during the notch, you use our old truck, but then you're taking a chance, and something went out, you bend it in, and and ruining the culvert, so.
And, and we can do that, and the part that stinks about the whole thing is then we got, we got one loader. I'm not complaining, but I mean, we need a load of gravel every time we do it. So you're gonna have to load your gravel, and then put your culverts on top, or now all of a sudden, that's it. I can do it, but it's not ideal for anybody involved.
Anyway, I, I need a motion, uh. Rex, save a motion. David's second, only favor.
Which one do you want?
It's from Luden, or Luden, I don't know what that's called, Luden. So, I'm not sure, either.
No, tell me about Luden.
What?
Tell me about Luden.
It's a twenty, oh, sorry. It's a twenty-foot deck over. It's twenty foot long, and it's gonna be a bumper dish, and deck over without the fenders, you know, so. A deck over without the fenders, you know, so. Seven thousand pound axle, that'll have ramp.
What ramp?
What is that? I've looked at a hundred of them.
Yeah.
DJ.
Okay.
And then I would also like to throw in the paper, if we can, just a primary reminder that our right of ways sixty-six foot. And some roads are a hundred and federal roads and stuff, but sometimes things get pushed in the ditches a little bit close and causes problems. For one, if we get snow again, if it's corn or something, then we're gonna have to go out and fall and mow it. And if we spray, I don't know. Kill everybody thing else. And so I would like to just put an ad in the paper, reminding everybody in the county that our right of way is sixty-six foot, federal roads. And everybody kinda knows which ones they are, I mean, the way why it's, that they're a hundred. Just not, you know, not saying we're gonna do nothing about it, but.
Just remind it.
Yeah, and when they, excuse me, when the department out there and spray it. And then you know what comes after that. Yeah, and then all of a sudden, I do, and I happen to make one, I ain't gonna tell you where, but it's a big foot off the road. That's, that's a little close.
When you do that, you're, you're only, uh.
Yeah. There. Yeah, I don't worry about that next year. But I mean, other counties, that's how they handle it. Publish it, you give them a year. You have bad problems, you mow it. And then not, we're not at that point, but anyways, I'm just saying we should remind everybody.
You still haven't no thought or something, I guess, for the television that was.
Yeah.
Yeah. Would, would we wanna publish it now or wait, I mean?
I mean, we kinda, you know, we're on the boat, we missed the boat, but I mean, it's probably not a bad reminder, I guess. Yeah, like this April, but.
Maybe make sure we get it out, right?
I'd say anytime otherwise this call, if it gets something, and if there is a problem, we go out and move it, and we never know the problem.
And you know, ninety-nine percent of the people, if they do think they're close and they got corn, they're, they're probably gonna go knock it down themselves, just 'cause that's the thing to do, you know. It probably won't be an issue, I just think. Maybe need to remind it.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And one last thing, we got an email, and Deb got it also. We got, there's a meeting next Tuesday for me and they asked if I would be interested for them doing. It's on budgeting, certified laws, um, the correct way to bid, projects for the highway department and stuff. It's a hundred dollars and it's next Tuesday. Sorry for shortening.
Where's it at?
Here.
In here.
Well, I think so. Yeah, it's here. Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you. I don't know what I got in today.
Yep. Thank you. Uh, D O E, Ray, D nine-one-one, we passed.
Okay, uh, we'll start with wean pest. Okay, wean pest update. Uh, Bill Walker from Nutrien was here. Uh, we got the spray trucks all calibrated and set up. Chemical was ordered and received. Um, we ordered, uh, we got a couple pumps. We've got chemical in barrels, so we can pump it right into the truck from the trailer or whatever, uh, makes it a little more versatile that way. Uh, and as Tanner indicated, spraying has started on the, uh, primary routes, uh, this week. I printed off the chemical labels, they're on the table over here, and we put those in the str- uh, spray truck. Uh, anywhere else we need them, we can have them there too, but those are everything that we ordered that we're spraying with now. There was two requests, uh, for areas not to be sprayed. We got together, got to the map, checked that all out, so we know where all that's at. Uh, there was only two of those. Uh, I've got a pesticide application record as well, and that's what we're using for, um, to document our trend. And that's supposed to be right there, but it didn't come up. Anyway, I've got a copy of it here. And that's what we're using to, uh, it records, uh, weather conditions and where we're at, everything like that. So we got those going on. Uh, let's see, and I think we talked about the right of ways. Uh, we covered that. Okay, nine-one-one update, uh, we met in Fort. Yes. Yes. Uh, we met in Fort Thompson with Maria Kane, uh, Harry Redmond, District Three, and members of Mid State Communications were also there. Uh, the main part of that was discussion was on how to improve the nine-one-one service countywide. And we might be able to have a little more input there too. Um, efforts ongoing to improve infrastructure to enhance the service. Basically was the whole thing. So, it was a good meeting there.
And so what money do we have in here now? Well, we've got money here, check for you. So when we get.
It's that, uh, Mayor Comiskey brought it up for, it happened from the Northwestern District that, uh, that nine-one-one, one call up to Fort Thompson, we got misplaced or something. Thought we got it.
I read that in the paper someplace too, that it, it went to Fort Thompson and they didn't know where the, where the place was, but, yeah, I seen that.
But he, he made the concern that where the weak spot is their nine-one-one.
Yeah.
And we could be out next year.
Yeah, because that should still bounce off of this tower out here. Right. I seen that, now that you brought that up.
Sounds like there's gonna be another one coming up next week down that country somewhere.
Okay, where is that one? Down, meeting down here?
An Eglis meeting or something. Yeah.
Okay. Any more questions on that? Okay, uh, from a safety standpoint, I've reached out to Hyman Fire for five additional fire extinguishers for equipment. Perhaps, uh, any of the equipment that we need, uh, smaller fire extinguishers in. I've been doing a monthly, uh, rotation on the fire extinguishers and inspections and sign-off. And, uh, we might be, I think we're about due for the annual as well. So we'll do that at the sake of time. Uh, there's also some first aid kits we're getting, make sure we're, got what we need there, so. Hyman Fire? It's for like the trucks or the road grader, fire extinguishers to go. Yep. Uh, attended the Southeast Central District meeting in Plankton. Um, S D M L was there, they talked about some grant money. Uh, there's gonna be training for first responders coming up. Uh, there's also a thing, uh, Deborah and I got on the safety award. Uh, one of the conferences they had, it was last year, they talked about that. I don't think Buffalo County's ever had, uh, a safety award. I'll get us one. If that's okay. Uh, Chris Jacobson spoke, upcoming conferences, um, and then comprehensive plan, um, John Clegg indicated that, uh, Davison County has completed their comprehensive plan. Was the first county in the state to do so. And, uh, so I've left a message for him, the point is in case we want a comprehensive plan. Okay, uh, District Three meeting, uh, not a lot there. Um, I've attended all of those and this one, uh, was in May. Um, the one thing I took apart, uh, took from there was, uh, Brian McGuinness gave a, a small talk on public meetings, uh, dos and don'ts and goals and running a, a meeting. Uh, working with, uh, with one thing that stood out to me was that it's not the decision that you make that must be correct. It's that you, each decision is made correctly. So that was kind of a, and I'll put this on the bulletin board, uh, some good information in here on that, so. Yep, that's right. Yeah, yeah. Uh, the handbook has been, uh, we've given the new employees in the Highway Department, uh, a copy of the handbook to read. Uh, the acknowledgement form, uh, was also with it. I'll get those back, have them on file. We've also got a couple other places that we have the handbook. What I'm gonna do is put a location in the footer so that if it ever revs up, I know exactly where the existing copies are to destroy and replace with new, so.
The chairman and, uh.
State attorney. Our copy here in the courthouse and the Highway Department, so they'll know where they're at at all times, so. No, no, not unless there's employee portal. You can certainly, I have one, that's over. Uh, one last thing, from maintenance standpoint, I do have, uh, roofly. And there it is. When we had that heavy rain earlier this spring, I don't know if you can see it.
Right there in the corner?
Yeah, it's right by, oh, here we go. That's maybe going up a little too large, but, um, it was only one rain that we noticed that. So if we remember, uh, when we had, forgive who it was, the command repaired the corners where it goes down to the down spots, they fixed that for like two thousand dollars. They set the roof, but sometime that underlayment is getting kinda thin. And where we left off was that anytime we wanna quote for a new roof, they can do that, so. Uh, I've reached out there, I sent them an email and I haven't heard any come back yet, but that's in my office. So, just a. That's the only time I've seen that. It was a hard rain, so, just F Y.
Did you see it?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Wind was, I can't remember, but. Just one time. I took a picture of it right away because we may never see it again, right? So, I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
See, there were two hospitalizations, but I think that I gave those, uh, if I have no, that's the place, keep that included, we looked at. Because I just wanna see those. Can you, that we just keep them or give them to them? Well, that was it for the hospitalizations. The next thing is the treasures, Audrey's hot, well, and we have Hodder's report for April. And that did go through, and I made a copy right there for everybody if you wanna make copies. You can do that afterwards, but it's in that folder right there for everybody. It'll be there for, uh, some months, so, before you get around. Um, the checks and payroll is also in there. I gave you guys the copy, but if they want copies, the staff, it's copies in there. Again, that's that book that we talked about last time, and it's gonna be in, uh, right there by the water machine and stuff, so everything should be in there. Next thing would be the two thousand twenty-four provisional budget. And so I sent you guys that in the mail. I don't know if we want to have another meeting this month through. And that's what we would have.
Is this here? I didn't get this, I don't know where it come from, but. Is this revenue, is this all of this for sure? Is that somebody's big sharing? Question. Or is it taking that out?
Is that the annual report you're looking at? Yeah. Government, yeah, the annual report. So that would have been done, you came to that meeting, the annual report. Yep, you said the back, and we talked about it. Well, some of it, I, I don't do this one. This funnels down into somebody.
Oh, you have a meeting point, some type of a guy, cause look, that's projected for twenty-four.
In the file right there, so.
Projected for twenty-four?
I sent that to you, so you have a projection of that.
That's all it's thinking for, I see.
Well, that's what we would be looking at.
Well, I know, but you gotta know how much money you're gonna bring in before you can do it, right? Right? Well, legally it works backwards. But legally it works backwards. I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, but it depends what you're gonna do.
What I. Now, the way the law was set up to do it is that you are supposed to figure out what you need to do as a governor. So it's gotta be that, we need to figure it out. And, and then you set your path according to that.
I will let you know that we're gonna get a big dig in regards to that forty percent because we don't spend enough money. I know that people disagree with us, that we have not met that forty percent.
Such a small amount of revenue, and I, I admire them for getting that much money away, but you got my, these bridges, two hundred thousand in the white.
We'll donate over a couple of years. We don't have to have it in one year.
We, cause I think we put out.
Ninety or extra.
I wanted to say about a hundred and fifty thousand.
For total, but the budget was like one point six million. No, that's what the budget said. The budget that come in the email.
Are we talking about?
Huh?
What are we talking about? I thought you were talking business to your loved one.
That's part of the question.
He's right, that, that says one million five hundred and sixty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-five.
But, but, and you're taking in like five or six hundred thousand every year.
Correct, that's why, that's the commissioner, who really do need to sit down and figure out.
Cut the lot of things.
Cause some of them, some of them at that quarter of a million dollars, we do need to start figuring out and cut them through and. Because see, we got, for, for the example, we've got one budget that is budgeted two hundred and seventeen thousand for the year. And they've used forty-three thousand. And we're gonna get dinged because we haven't used forty percent of it. So we've gotta bring that, that one down. So that one person needs to spend.
No, no.
So that, otherwise, that's a ding.
Bring the budget down so that you don't have that situation.
Budget was last year.
I understand that.
We can't bring it down now.
But we're talking about.
Right, no, we understand that, but we're gonna get dinged because of it. And we are getting dinged right now because of it. On several different. Get dinged for years.
A ding is.
Go your hair off.
We know that.
But I don't know where in the hell it's gonna come from, because I don't want that.
I hope it's not my taxes, that's.
I hope it's not my taxes, that's the size I wanna pay.
I agree.
The only increase that comes to your taxes. Yeah, the only increase on your taxes is coming from the school. It hasn't come from here. Yes, it will, but there has not, it's come from the schools that are building new schools.
But I, but I was thinking.
Now, one thing. As of twenty-three assessment, I'm in Arlington Township. The budget, the taxes from Arlington Township to Buffalo County have down to twenty-one percent now. The last five years, it's just going like this. They're down to twenty-one percent. Take it, take it, pray it out for you yourselves on the whole topic. Thirty, the county gets twenty-one percent.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Right.
Watch the track. I'm sure you're on the computer. Five years ago, thirty-five percent. Where are we headed? You get into these provisional budgets and stuff, you just scare the devil out of you. I'm, I'm. You are now in the budget setting process. I, I don't know that you all are aware of how the process works. Initially, there will be a provisional budget that is up to the commission to go through that provisional budget and readjust it. Ultimately, they will propose a final budget and they will have the public area. And, uh, both, uh, when the provisional is put out, that will be published and you can take a look at it. You're free to make your input on it. And, you know, it's worth while you're, you're involving yourself in that process and taking a look at how it works. I agree.
One thing I will say about the budget, I mean, it has always been stamped, but it should be kind of some kind of reality to the budget. High for many and for everything, whatever.
No, and I did increase the commission budget because we had three meetings last month and we've never done any of that. And it's gonna become, there's times when we've got to, you know, this month we've got to have two meetings because of the budget. And then I believe it's like September is another time in April and none of that has ever been changed. You know, I did increase the salary on the day because, like I said, we had three meetings last, last month.
One thing I would like to do, Tammy, is try to find the figures in that last pile of data, cost this and kind of see the rest. How long did my last, it'd be hard to use, but.
Oh, is that, that one over here at Rod's?
Yeah, there should be money put in the country gravel purchase or something, so. Yeah, I can get pretty close on that stuff there at the gravel, but trying to see how long it'll last. I think I should kind of start looking for sources so that I can.
Well, he wouldn't at the time. You know, he was not gonna sell any of the, anymore at the time when we got that out, that was it. So I'm saying.
I, I remember that. She was looking at Jim making all the files.
So what you're talking about is capital outlay. And so if you're looking at a one-year plan or a three-year plan or a five-year plan, that's called a capital outlay. So when you go to look at your budget, go to look at capital outlay, capital outlay and you put your budget in. This is for Tanis and he asked for the capital outlay. So it would be, so you need to put money in to keep a capital outlay. I don't, I don't know how to explain that any better.
It's been over a period of years.
The days were over a period of years. Right, right. So we probably need to take the general plan.
Right.
You probably need to.
Okay, so here are the instructions. We jumped into that because of that village trying to stay ahead of it.
Oh, shit, that's empty, that one, yeah.
So, yeah. Yeah.
I didn't, I wouldn't have that one, but I'm sorry. Well, how much was the gravel?
I got gravel number, I got dollar figures on that pile.
From both, because it was second, some one year, some.
Look, was it a year ago I compiled all, I went through all of the invoices, everything that was paid.
No, I mean, what it costs for it, making the mine.
Yeah.
Gravel. Gravel and mining is two hundred and forty-eight thousand.
Huh?
Gravel and the mining is two hundred and forty-eight thousand, yes, yeah. Hundred and ten thousand dollars throughout, that was to Morris.
Morris.
You don't have to just not hold it up, you don't remember how many, how much that was, yeah, how much they put up there. You know how much they put up there. And I can figure that out, that isn't that, that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, I don't.
Well, the hundred, no, fair enough.
Started out eighty thousand, something, I believe.
They must have gone for a large amount.
Yeah.
Well, and, and they never ran out of gravel.
It got cool.
Well, that and where they. Yeah, where they put the gravel was where the good gravel was, but they couldn't find where, what's its name, it was the hole. And then the pile is hitting on top of the good gravel, but watch, at that point in time, Lloyd went to Ask Rod to buy more gravel. The rods took a while. So, yeah, that's what the deal was, because the really good gravel is underneath that pile.
Dollars that they can spend.
Might, yeah.
Well, there's a, you know, we got hills and hills and hills of gravel in it, you know, and.
Get the right stuff. That's like my gravel is the good place, it's not.
Well, that's why he's forgiven, playing the old used.
But I mean, the gravel.
And, and where some of the gravel is, we have great access to it.
When you're calling to lose, figure out more, you don't really know, figure out what.
Anyway, well, aren't you.
So that's all I have for the auditorium report.
Okay. Checks and payroll report, that's done, provisional budget, colonial life.
I sent to you all the information for colonial life, that guy was here, so that'll be up to you guys if you wanted to do anything for colonial life or.
I, I will be very honest, I've got a very, very young mother, you know, I have been with that hospital, I have been with my mom. So I have not been around as much as I would like. And I honestly cannot remember. I, I remember seeing it, but that's all I can, can tell you right now. So, um, if you guys wanted, I, I know there was some, it was very cheap for the license plate, I remember that. So.
We can table it, so.
Yeah. Let's table it, um, I, I, I think it was a very good benefit for the client, so we, it was, you know. So, yeah. How's, uh.
I gave that letter to you, John, it's a request letter for funding for cost of.
Or to find a special advocate for struggle.
I asked her, I asked caller and asked her, she would love to, somebody would, that nobody, nobody would.
Yeah, here you're asking for a donation, a five hundred dollar.
One of the, one of the.
Okay, all right. Um, upcoming trainings and holidays, Monday, June nineteenth is duly, um, it is a holiday, so the courthouse will be closed on June nineteenth, July fourth, Tuesday.
It is a Tuesday, so there was some aspects, but we have Monday, October.
Yeah, no, we don't, we just do it for. Yeah, July twelfth and thirteenth, connecting point, auditor, treasurer, DOE, registrar deed and highway part. Is that here then?
No, it's actually in here, but I just, and we can wait till next month to do it. I just wanted everybody, just in case we are all gone, that no matter who, all across Buffalo County would know that we would be gone.
Okay.
So. And I would put that on the website and, well, people should check the website or.
Yeah.
I was just trying to tell people in advance that we are getting next important post due. It could possibly be.
Yeah. Okay. Courthouse roof leak, we discussed that. Courthouse hours.
Let's ask for them.
Cause we must discuss with my people, we just, no matter if we've got to consider. I mean, I could get up in the sleep and then we can say, well, I was elected, might go out, just send me a check, right?
You could, but I.
There'd be anything we could do about it, so that's our point here, which is right.
But I think everybody that's got a job in the courthouse, sit here, whatever, nine to five, that's what I don't want to discuss.
That's the way it's always been, but it's certainly. And I've never driven fifty miles and it was closed and I never had to look at a website to see if there's.
Well.
I just knew Monday through Friday the courthouse was open, but not anymore.
There was one time that it was now opening, we were all, everybody was overturning the queue.
All five, four people.
Officials.
Officials. And it's possibly gonna happen on July twelfth through thirteenth.
Don't they have those at various times so you don't have to send everybody at the same?
Well, most of these, as David hand it out, we're one of the very few counties that don't have yet deputies.
But you've had two extra people that were in the electric position for quite a while, I think.
That's not a cross change to do anything.
Yeah.
We've never had.
You can't even get your transfer or your license plate, nobody can help you.
We've always had, no, we had registrar deeds and her name was Evelyn Waltz. And we had a very busy, and her name was the same as Janice. And never did I ever come here that if Janice was gone, Evelyn can do it.
Exactly, we don't have that anymore.
You don't have qualified.
No, never said I want anybody, but Janice doesn't want anybody to help her.
Who doesn't?
Janice does not.
Well, why didn't she take her ways? Because she's always been here.
Well, I don't know, that, that's what she wants and, you know, but, well, I'll talk to her.
There was a time we did have a fully, uh, when John Cook was around.
Yeah, but they've always been qualified to do one of the other, but.
I think Ed Dolce was cross picked as well and she resigned from that position. I don't remember when that happened, but I just saw the paper.
Well, I, no, I.
What, what is Ed's position? If she's not an deputy and she's not.
She's a contract worker.
Well, contract her for what?
Wherever she's needed, and a lot of it is to register deeds.
rural county does most of our registrar deeds work, and it's reported right with them.
rural county does the court, the courts work, not the registrar.
Well, why is it sometimes in the paper with rural county? If, if you read it, it'll say rural county and then underneath it it says Buffalo County. Because it's all in the same part, but they don't do our work. I, I don't think that's true. I'm gonna go down to rural county and I'm gonna check, you know, that's the only way I'm gonna find out for sure.
But if you find out, I know about that.
Okay, I'll probably give you, you can go there and say you're there. You can know what's he did, I love it.
But, um. I, I will say this, I had, uh, before the guy was there, I had multiple complaints to my neighbor. Okay, and real estate recordings, the time is critical. South Dakota has what's called a very small inspection, meaning the first one to the courthouse with their paper is delivered. And theoretically, when a document is recorded, the person taking the document is to write on that document the exact minute that that came in. So it is critical to have some of them here. Now, you don't have a total recording, uh, from low down, any memory of you. But the problem you have is you don't know when you're coming in and you have to have some other reserve, a type of background here.
So that's what.
There's other recordings that happen within here too. You guys talked about Doug being gone when he passed away. So those books have been untouched because there's not time to, to go through those. So when somebody calls and says, can you go through this and do this deed, which we probably get three, four home calls a week. We have to research those, go through those. Those you don't see in the little tally marks that this happens, and this happens, and this happens. It still happens and you can't neglect the people that call and ask for it, so.
We're, there, there's digital recordings of all the documents come in, plus we do keep the books, you're referring to the microfilm.
Right.
Microfilm is behind. But the books are up to date, as are the free book and the scanner.
Yeah, that's, that's up to date.
Exactly.
What we do right now.
Yep.
I'm just saying, there's a lot of people that walk in or come in or call or ask for things. We just have to service that and you just don't see that.
Do you have them there still yet?
No.
And, and we.
Highway, Highway twelve.
I had an idea about that, but we'll talk about that.
And nine one one.
Right, yeah, well, that's, I think, well, it hasn't always been, he's the first one that took the course and the date was interesting.
Mr. Surgeon, you're saying that earlier you mentioned that you can't help people with these during all regular hours and stuff. And if we have all these things that are way back now and not up to date or whatnot, why can't those people who come and have stuff, you didn't hear them?
Well, I don't, I don't, she just said that we're behind on ours. Well, this is from years now, is that stuff up to date or not? Well, it's getting that way, but she can't do that, plus the audit. So then that's what we've done, you bet trying to do.
But it's, so, so you're saying like she's here all the time during the regular four hours.
No, she just comes.
So you're always here during the regular. No, you are, so you're always here during the regular. I'm just saying that, yeah.
Yeah, typically, she's here.
She's here for traffic that's gonna be here, ninety-nine point nine percent of foot traffic is Janice. So, like, the treasure. So, I know that somebody came through to see the treasure, correct, and nobody was here, but were you here to see the treasure?
I was here, well, I just couldn't believe there was not a court.
But were you, were you here to see the treasure?
Yes, and then after that, I called before I came here to do anything, because I didn't wanna drive another forty miles.
Which is what we've been asking people to do, Janice has asked people to do that for years, that's what it says on there, please call, make sure personnel is there. She's been asking that even before I got here.
It's true.
But she's always been.
She's not here today.
Right, right, exactly, oh, she's on a family emergency, so she's not, we don't have anybody to cover.
We went on a training, and so.
No, we can't.
No, we're not trying to, what I'm saying is.
We're not trying to.
She's the one that has the most foot traffic, so.
She's the one that's.
So, and there's, there's little that I can do, so when you came in, if I would have been there, I wouldn't have been able to help you.
But at least somebody would have said, well, I'm sorry, we can't help you.
But the sign could have, the sign said that, correct?
No, it didn't, it just said that you were a attorney, but it didn't tell me that nobody was gonna be at the courthouse.
Well, that was obvious, because there was nobody at the courthouse.
Either Ed or Lee or somebody else, I would have thought, would have been here.
Ed, I'm not gonna pay Ed to sit here and wait for someone to come through at twenty-five dollars an hour, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but she, why couldn't she be doing the other work that's just so far behind her, Ed had the job before, isn't it, she's a woman, she knows what's going on.
Cause we're not, we're not prepared to start doing all the task stuff yet, and we're not there. So we don't have the correct scanning, so there's machinery that have to go, we have to each cook on how to go ahead and start those scanning, because they do that over and through all. So we have the motion, we have everything in motion to kind of start, but you need certain things to start those too. And we need to figure out from deed magic, and I know you guys don't know deed magic, to know where things ended, because if I pulled all those files out, which there's hundreds of them, and thought, okay, where's deed start, where did deed start? Uh, there's no way for me to do that, so I have to go through the microfilm to start and do that. And again, I'll do that, I'll start that, because I make little twenty bucks an hour versus twenty-five dollars an hour.
We don't really know.
Yeah, one thing is, I think the issue is, what we're asking for is not on the line, and if, and if you're offended, I'm sorry, really sorry.
I never get offended, trust me.
Your hours should be Monday through Friday, nine to five, and if you don't, and you don't have to be there, and Lee obviously doesn't have to be here either. But then don't hire another person to fill in the hours that you are not here, if you can't get your work done, eight hours, now you're hiring another person in at twenty-five bucks.
So how do I do that for, let's say we have an interview at seven o'clock at night, to, so I comp that time, I'm here to tell you, I comp that time. So.
Yeah, we had to do an interview, because he had another job, he had to come comp, so we did the interview.
That isn't something that happens all the time, that is a one-time thing. A one-time thing, so that's, not a lot of. We understand some of the things, but not all of the time, you can't.
If, but we're not, it's, that meeting is once a year that we have that courthouse closed, again, there's another one coming.
Yep.
These people don't have another opportunity to go to get that training.
I see, but a lot of courthouse, you know.
They, they have got deputies. That, did you not, did you see?
I have another deputy, we need somebody.
There's deputy training, so they go to.
We used to, we used to have a register of deeds, and they got rid of the office, because there was not enough of work for registered deeds, and now all of a sudden, we're just. She moved. And we.
She moved.
She moved. She was here, that was one of the first years I met her, she moved, she left the racket, so then that thing's been piling up and piling up, we're probably.
Well, we're behind in this, okay, so.
Let's try to change something. What we got here is meditation. Big time. All right, I see all these electronic. Why in the hell ain't we using them?
Thank you. Did you not notice we got a card-based thing now?
I don't.
We've got a website, we have a website, that has a website on your computer, that you can go to Buffalo County, and it tells you everything is on there. It's not what I meant, everything, you don't even have the last meeting up there, the minutes of that publish, the minutes, the last few minutes of that on that website. They're not approved, till today, you can put a draft up. It says on the ballot by law, after the minutes, we have a website. Our, our, our lawyer just said we can't put a draft up. Well, you should. You can put on a, that has not been approved. No, for the discussion.
I believe they're all on there at the end of Monday, so.
They publish unapproved minutes, why couldn't they go on the website?
Okay, I'll put it on the website, so you can, it'll be done.
Well, why have that website?
So, five days after, five days after this meeting, we'll make sure that the audio one's done, ten days after, it will be written. So.
Well, that's a loss, that's what you get paid for.
So we'll make sure that happens.
And put everything in there. The minute too, you bought that lawnmower, there's no money in there, it's all about the money, that's what your job is, it's all about the money, dollars and steps. Okay, that was my, David and I talked on the line, what, where were you doing it? Do we have, somebody need going to the.
What?
I would like to go and take a.
Uh, going into executive, at three forty, do I have a motion? A reason, what's your reason?
Personnel. And budget.